Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of Internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638 or meganet.net.
open session now and heading to executive session under General Laws Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss the resolution of all turbine litigation and also under General Laws Chapter 38, Section 21A6, with respect to the status update on potential purchase of Liberty Green project site. And as Chair, I state that to not go into executive session may prejudice the town's position in both of those cases. We will return to open session.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call?
Brown, aye.
Patterson, aye.
English Braga, aye.
Moran, aye.
Jones, aye.
Thank you. returned from executive session. We're starting the open session with a call to order in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no proclamations today. Ms. Braga, recognition?
Yes, just a general recognition that in this holiday season, I just really want to recognize the work of the Falmouth Service Center, incredible turnout that they had last week providing, from Thanksgiving all the way to now, food, toys, as they always do, clothing, assistance for individuals who find themselves looking for housing this time of year. So, we say it all the time, but it's probably never enough for the work that they do, the individuals that work there, as well as all the volunteers. It's a tremendous asset to this community. Unfortunately, we have so many folks in this community that are in need, go through difficult times, and I hope that the Service Center understands the appreciation that this community has. And I also hope that all of us, when we are not in that moment of need, are generous with our time and with our resources because it doesn't take much for you to be on the other side. So, just a big thank you to the Service Center and all those folks who are there.
Excellent. Announcements, anyone?
I just want to thank everyone for the congratulations I've received for my electoral or my Senate victory in Alabama. Unfortunately, we'll not have to be flying down to Alabama or Washington, but fascinating Senate race to watch.
You've been very, very busy.
I just want to mention that, I don't know if you noticed in the paper, there was a little article about the Falmouth Water Stewards, who's working on bringing water stations to, you know, several areas in town, including maybe the bikeway and possibly Main Street. So, they'll be coming to us soon with a plan.
Peg Noonan you were looking at, I saw?
We looked at Peg Noonan early on, Mr. Suso and I and Mr. Jack. We found a likely area that may be suitable for there. And then, so we're investigating with other groups now, as well as the roadways and bikeways and other groups. So, once they have a cohesive plan of action, they'll bring it to us and ask for us to support it, so.
Any chance of two traditional bubblers at the Village Green or at the library?
They're actually called water stations and you can, it's a refill reuse. You can put your jug in there, or cup, or whatever, and just get some fresh water right out of that. There's a little dog dish at the bottom. And so, they're really...
Because they, a long time ago, the Village Green and the Ivory Lawn-
Right.
-had bubblers there.
Yes, and this will have a bubbler on the backside as well, so you can refill or just get a drink.
That's great, so the modern version.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Next, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak about a matter that's not on our agenda. There's a two-minute minimum.
Maximum.
Thank you. Thank you. And there will be no discussions about particular persons. Mark, please come up. Thank you for that.
Mark Finer in Precinct 6. Of late, your selectmen have been speaking of your desire to have more participation and be more open with the public as far as your meetings are concerned. And there was something in the Born Enterprise that I saw, and it's actually an issue that I've brought up a few times in the past during the elections. And it's relative to the Selectmen's Packet. The actual headline in the Born Enterprise was "Town Takes Step to Make Selectmen's Work More Transparent" and "All Documents in the Selectmen's Packet Will Be Released Online." So, basically, citizens can watch at home and follow through with all the information that you have. It would also make it easier if they had an interest in the particular subject. They could go over the documentation and see that you're on your way to the proper decision or whatever, and it wouldn't necessitate them even coming. And then, of course, on the opposite side of that coin, they could see if there was something that they thought they could add to the issue. So, I think that maybe you should take a page out of Born's book, so to speak, and make the Selectmen's Packet that you have available online, so we all could participate and follow along, follow the bouncing ball, so to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Finer. Anyone else? Okay, the first item-
Oh, come up, please. Sorry, didn't see your hand. Welcome, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Bobby Richards. I'm with the Falmouth Housing Authority. I'm the new executive director, and I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone. And also to let you know that Falmouth Housing Authority is celebrating its 70th anniversary, effective January 1st. So, our goal is to do 70 amazing things in a 12-month period. So, I look forward to coming and attending many of the Board of Selectmen's meetings, and it's my pleasure to say hello.
Thank you, we really appreciate that. Welcome. Great. Next, we have summary of action licenses. Vote to approve application for new common digital license. Taste of Two Chefs, please come up. License requesting parties. This is at 420 East Falmouth Highway in East Falmouth.
Yes.
Could you introduce yourself, sir?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Please. We are opening up at 4:20 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. It's going to be a local burrito local, and it's going to be fish and chips in there, stuff like that, you know, just the fast food. And there is some sitting around there, too.
Can you just remind me, because I can't picture where, could you just give me the, where's 420?
It's right on, you know, that 420, there's a liquor store, used to Cape Cod Burger, if you remember. Same place.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Meeting on Astrid, I think.
Yep.
Is it that interesting?
Questions, Doug?
We did receive two, some emails on this project today, that there's some applications that have not come forward to the fire department or to the, some other inspections that haven't come through yet. I imagine we could either approve this on contingency of getting it, but usually we have those in hand.
They are coming on Wednesday at 10 o'clock, Board of Health.
And the fire department also?
I'm sorry?
The fire department also?
Yes, yes.
I think we should make it subject to those approvals.
Yes, agree.
Questions for the proponent?
No.
No?
When do you anticipate opening?
In a week, you know, soon we'll get the permits, everything, show on the line, that's it.
So, what, one of the things we're considering, since you have some requirements still left, is that we, if we are to approve the license, it would be subject to you making sure that those were all taken care of and that you had everything that was required.
It will be happening, yes.
Terrific. I so move, then, unless there are other questions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good work in the business.
Very good. Next, we have vote to approve request for extension of hours until 2:00 a.m. on December 31st for coffee and breakfast on behalf of the Cape Verdean Club of Falmouth at 126 Sandwich Road in Falmouth. Is there anyone here? Would you mind coming up?
Order, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would that not be 2:00 a.m. on January 1, 2018?
Technically, yes.
Yes, technically. That's a good point.
I just want to make sure that that's what gets approved.
No. So, you're...
Basically, serving coffee, breakfast for them to, give them time. We're going to actually start around 12.
I know everyone knows you.
So, it gives them a couple hours. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My name is Wesley Late, President of the Cape Verdean Club.
Great.
It's just, gives everyone time to, you know, relax and eat.
And in that petition, it says that this is not extending the alcohol hours, it's just for the breakfast and coffee.
No, no alcohol will be served after the regular hours.
I would move approval of the request for extension of hours.
Second?
We'd all second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Next, we have under administrative orders to approve payment from the Veterans Department donation account in the amount of $1,000 to Fellowship Health Resources, Inc. for Veterans Transportation Program. Is there anyone here on that? Is there a motion?
I move approval with gratitude.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A question. Just because this, it looks like it's a religious organization, I just wondered whether this has been thoroughly vetted and whether there's any implied quid pro quo involved here. Just an interest, you know, to make sure that this is, you know, truly a gift and doesn't have any strings attached.
Well, they did attach the minutes from the meeting.
I did read.
I think those were somewhat helpful.
Yes, I know, but I mean, it's like the devil's in the details, and I'm not sure all the details are here. It's just some assurance that I'd like to have, that we're not seeing some undue influence for any particular religious position.
I don't see anyone from Veterans here that could speak to that, unfortunately.
Well, I think we voted, so I'll let it flow.
And my, and just to speak to that, that point, I think that, I know we've had a strong counsel that I think probably will stand up to any, you know-
Scrutiny.
Any scrutiny. So, I think that, I don't, I'm not aware of any concerns we've ever had in the past with that particular, that group. And so, I think we can assume it's a goodwill gesture and will, our council will do their due diligence.
And we were taking the vote in that?
I think we did already vote.
Was that all, I didn't get the count?
Go ahead. Why don't you do it again, repeat.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
So did you. Okay, thank you. Next, we have affirmation of the town manager sending a letter of support for an association to preserve Cape Cod proposal for State of the Waters Cape Cod to the Mass Environmental Trust for fiscal year 2019 general grants. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We had a timing challenge with the request from Association to Preserve Cape Cod for a letter of support. So, I think we've only had this on one other occasion where I did transmit a positive letter of support for this potential grant program to the APCC, which would benefit waters within the town of Falmouth where that grant could be received, and is an extension of our excellent working relationship with that organization. So, I would ask for the board's concurrence with that having been transmitted and the timing, with my apologies for the reasons noted.
I'd move that we affirm that the town manager's sending the letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sam, is there a question?
No, there's not a question, but just to say, I thought it was an excellent letter and justifiable in circumstances.
Thank you.
Great, appreciate that. The next on the agenda is a vote to appoint Carla Ferroni to the Barnstable County Home Consortium Advisory Council. I know that Annie is no longer able to take that appointment. Mr. Suso, did you want to present this?
Certainly happy to, yes. When we contacted Annie Connolly, she indicated that she was not able to continue serving in that capacity to which the board had appointed her some time ago. And Carla Ferroni, of course, as the board's aware, is our new housing coordinator, and we feel that that would be an excellent fit for the responsibilities of Carla's position going forward, and would so recommend her appointment if that is the board's desire.
Move approval?
Second.
And, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
I was just going to say with thanks to Annie Connolly for the past work that she's done serving.
Indeed.
Great service. Next on the agenda, we have the Commission on Disabilities, Interview, Vote, and Appoint Committee Members. Let's see here, there are two vacancies, one term until June 30, 2018, one term until June 30, 2020. And, oh, thank you, that's what I was looking for. First, we have Ed Sullivan. Hi, thank you. Would you come to the podium, sir?
My name is Ed Sullivan. My wife and I both retired in February of 2005. After selling our house, we moved down here to East Falmouth to live with our daughter and her family. I read in the paper about the applicants that were last interviewed, and some worked for institutional settings. My experience is all life experience. I haven't had any work in the field. When my daughters were younger, they both, excuse me, tore ACLs, and I was involved in their recovery and their therapy. At one time, my mother lost the, her eye to cancer, an eye socket, and it was up to me to have to go over the house to clean out the socket and repack it and that sort. And my wife has rheumatoid arthritis. She's had it for about 35 years, and she's had numerous operations that were required for RA. And as a result of RA, her wounds don't heal easily. So, I've had, you know, insurance companies and Medicare don't pay long-term nurse care. So, I wound up being the nurse on many of these operations. Since we moved to the Cape, she's had five major back operations. And, you know, over the years, I've been her nurse and her general caretaker. As for myself, I'm often told that I don't look disabled. In actuality, I have a 60% VA disability rating. And my issue started about 17 years ago when I was on a non-combat NATO deployment, and I injured my spine and had some spinal cord damage. Fortunately, you know, my damage isn't to the point where I've been wheelchair-bound or whatever. But over those years, I've had severe back pain, and I've got nerve damage and muscle damage to the legs. And as Selectman Braga had pointed out, it's easy to go to the other side when you're, you know, if you become disabled or whatever. Out of necessity, I forced myself to continue working through the years, just to be able to support the family and keep from, you know, happening to slip into a problem. Several years ago, my leg started giving me severe problems, and I've had three back operations to help relieve that pain. In addition to my back and my legs, I have a pacemaker that I've had for a number of years. And the pulmonologist tells me now I'm starting to get nonsmoking COPD. With all the experiences with the injuries to my family and myself, you can see the variety of situations that I've had to deal with as far as their care. And it gives me a great insight into the needs of many of the handicapped and disabled people. I wish to be on the commission in order to be, make the public more aware of the needs of the disabled. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, if you'd just wait for a second for one or two potential questions. I'm very impressed with the fact that you started with all of your advocacy roles and everything that you've learned in dealing with insurance and, you know, just accessibility issues before you even got to trying to qualify yourself personally. But I just wonder if some of the board may have a question or two.
He did, but he answered them.
He answered them. Anyone? Sam?
Okay. I just want to ask the same question I asked two weeks ago, and that, you know, you've mentioned the physical disabilities, and of course, it takes a great amount of emotional strength and patience to be able to endure those. But what about people with mental illness and addiction? Do you consider that to be a disability as well?
I fortunately never had to deal with anybody in the family that has an addiction problem. My mother had dementia at a period of time before she passed away. I have an uncle that, before he passed away, had, what do you call it?
Alzheimer's?
Alzheimer's. So, you know, I understand those needs. And again, you know, like I say, I've been fortunate and ever have been involved in people with drug issues, including ourselves. We've, you know, as many injuries and operations that the families had, none of us have ever used the excuse that was the pain that caused us to get into that type of situation.
And my question is a simple one. Just, I see where it says amount of time you're available to give. You just wrote retired, so that means as much as it takes?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Although I'm busier now than when I worked.
That happens, especially in Falmouth.
Exactly.
Well, thank you for the interview. We have tough decisions in front of us. If you'd have a seat, if you have a few more minutes, we expect to make decisions tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bertha, you're up.
I'm popular woman. I'm Bertha Manson. Right now, I graduated from Joseph P. Keith Technical School as a nurse's aide. I worked for nurse's aide for 14 years of my life. I did a lot. I also worked for Stop &amp; Shop in Falmouth, and broke a hip in Stop &amp; Shop in Mashpee when I was working for Stop &amp; Shop. I volunteered at Premier Union, Bethany Hospital, went to Gables, Cushing Hospital. I also went to Citizen Police Academy. Scouter and me, scouter and I. Being disabled proved that you can go to Citizen Police Academy, elect a scouter and all. Took care of my father for nine years till death as a disabled vet, Floyd Dean, knowing what to be able to do, to be able to be, deal with the disabled in this town, and know where to go to get help. I brought Elliot O'Gore over to the clubhouse when I had an issue with the clubhouse. I couldn't get in the clubhouse because of the shelves that are down. I brought Elliot O'Gore to see what was the problem with the association clubhouse. I also brought the architect board, called them to come out and deal with it. The biggest problem I had was I couldn't get in the building. I couldn't get in, they have shelves down. The shelves should not be down when you come to things like that. I brought, I asked him, what do I, how do I deal with this? A lot of them didn't know what to do with it. A lot of them were like, what's this? I had a handicap fan all the time of it. That was another issue. He didn't know how to put down the ramp. We put down the ramp and went in the building. But the handicap parking should have been in the front of the building, not on the sideline or not here and there. I mean, it's sad. I mean, I've been, I've been here 27 years. I've never had an issue with getting in a building. I had issues with that. I also had issues with the main library. It doesn't have a ramp on the back end of it. I have doors that want to shut on me. I'm like, what the heck is this? The town really needs to look at the disabled, realize you need to do something, and do it, and not just sit there and say, oh, and I also am a caretaker. I have time to do things for the disabled. I put my foot down into a lot of things. I was not someone who let everybody else, who let everybody else take care of it. Not when you get stuck in the building, and not when you get stuck in places you can't get out of.
Bertha, I have a quick question.
Yep.
So, how would you describe your ability to work with other folks in a committee situation?
Yep, I can do that. I can do that 100% because I worked at Stop &amp; Shop, and I dealt with other people. It's not like I've never dealt with people. I've also worked at nursing homes. I've dealt with people. I've dealt with the old folks. The old folks are lovable bunch. I can deal with young, old, whatever. That's where I am.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions from the board?
Just the same question I just asked them. Do you consider mental illness and addiction to be a disability?
Yep.
And that would be part of the scope of the disability?
That's all right. That I can handle because I live in Seacoast. Seacoast, I had two houses that were cleared out of drug addicts. And if you realize, the PAC 109 had drugs, and 11 had drugs. And 11 was on right next door to me. And I cleaned out that house, those two houses, because I got after landlord. And I understand addiction. I understand what's going on. I live in Seacoast. When you live in Seacoast, you know, you know drug addiction. You know a lot of things.
Mr. Brown, any questions?
No.
Good, thank you.
Sorry.
I just, I just want to say, I don't want Seacoast to get to, you know-
No, 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 no.
It's everywhere in our town.
No, I know.
No, I know. I'm just, I don't want anyone to think that, you know, the perception of this board and this community shouldn't be that addiction or, you know, mental health issues are confined, they're all over our community, they're across, yes. But I just want to make sure we don't give Seacoast, Seacoast is a beautiful area. I don't want to give it a bad name.
And good people.
But when you're cleaning it out of drug addicts, and you're dealing with drug addicts full-time, I don't want people thinking Seacoast is not a great area. It's a great area. But it's taken work to clean it out. We didn't have any help. We were doing it on our own, dealing with landlords.
Is that you ringing, Bertha?
That's me.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Dan Mahoney.
I don't see Mr. Mahoney here this evening. Do you know, Julian, if he withdrew his application or I had it still?
I don't recall getting any notification about any withdrawal.
Okay.
I had expected to see Mr. Mahoney, but maybe there was a late email.
He wasn't here on the first night. And we had asked to just follow up to make sure that there wasn't another issue. I do know that he utilizes a wheelchair. I don't know if there was any other-
Mine takes him everywhere.
Everywhere usually, right? So, okay. I'm just, yeah, maybe he's not interested anymore. I just wanted to make sure we knew before we voted whether or not.
Don't know.
We can also, there'll be openings coming up, too, if he continues to have interest.
Yeah, that's fine.
He'll have other opportunities. So, now we've had five interviews for two positions. Is there anyone who feels ready to make a motion? Doug?
Yeah, I would like to move that we appoint Francis Dupree to a term ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Anyone else?
And can I just point out with that, that I think that one of the benefits of having a wide applicant pool like this is that we can use it as an opportunity to try to fill out the commission so that we really cover the spectrum of the needs and experiences. And I think that Ms. Dupree's experience is something that is not represented on the board right now in that she has a lot of experience sort of in service and working on particular community programs for individuals with disabilities. So I think that's why we hope to have an applicant base that's wide and broad so that we can have a range of voices on the board, so.
I also think this is a board that's going to need to be doing a lot of work and I think, and we'll have some action plans. I think, I felt that she was someone who was really going to be able to start getting out there because I think public understanding of the commission disabilities and what they're going through is so important. And I really felt that she'd be someone who would be quite active in getting the word spread for those people who don't understand.
Oh, working with building, housing.
Yeah. I think the experience of knowing where the opportunities are, and not only that, but how to go through all the institutional hoops that you have to go through in order to be able to get funding, to get permitting and what have you, to make sure that things are accessible, is a very important set of experiences to bring to this committee. I know Jane Perry, who preceded Kathleen as the chair, came to me early on in the Lawrence Windows Project and noted that there wasn't an automatic door opener for somebody in a wheelchair or any other disability that made it awkward for them to pull a door open. And just by putting that request in, we managed to sneak it into that project, and it got done. And so the door that's next to the auditorium has a ramp that you can get, allows you to get in and out. But just those kinds of opportunities and knowing when these opportunities are going to become available, I think is a valuable resource. So hopefully she'll bring all of those kinds of insights and experience to your committee.
With the second term, I'd like to move Ed Sullivan. I think his advocacy experience on really both sides of the fence, as well as his disability experience, would be very valuable. So I'm moving him for the term ending June 30, 2018.
Could I just also add that I think? Oh, I'm sorry. If I could just also add to that, that, and Kathleen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think he brings the experience of a disabled veteran that I don't know is represented on that board right now, and that's a really critical piece that we're, we don't have covered at this point in time and some ability for collaboration. So I think that's a good choice.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
That's a second, ma'am.
A discussion before we vote. I just, I did not find this an easy decision.
Oh, no.
I was really impressed with the quality of applicants we had for it. Even looking over Mr. Mahoney's application, we didn't get to interview him. But it's really wonderful, and I think it's testimony to Kathleen, or at least to Jane Perry also, to really get this commission up forward and getting it active and having six people want to come and work on the commission. Some of these positions will be coming up, for instance, this term we're talking about does expire June 30, 2018.
Yes.
And so there will be some other openings, and I hope that people who don't get appointed will continue to come to the meetings, they can be involved and potentially apply again.
Absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you all for your interest. We really appreciate it.
And please stay involved. It's needed.
Next, we have the social media policy presentation report, which we are continuing to a meeting in January. And after that, we have the Conservation Commission report. Welcome. Come right up. Step right up. I see a few members of the committee here. Oh, goodness sakes.
Our tech master isn't here, but I bet Julian can.
We're going to give you the second string on that one.
Yes. You need to make sure that we use the right.
It usually takes a warm-up or something.
At least the laptop should be up and down.
Yeah, you should be able to select the presentation and bring it up on your display there.
There it is.
Look at your display on your laptop because it'll come up eventually on the screen.
It's up there.
Oh, there you go.
Really good kids. There it goes.
Start slideshow. Slide it up to the right.
If you, Mary, you see the little screen on the bottom row?
That too.
If you just put your cursor on top of it and snap it to far left of the little icons across the bottom.
Or far left.
Highlighted them?
Where it says from beginning on the top. Either one. No. Top left, where it says from beginning will also work. Right there.
Okay. Either one.
I have chairman and members of the board. I'm Mary Schumacher, and I'm chair of the Falmouth Conservation Commission.
It's the one on the right or the left? Sorry.
We want to make this as hard as possible for you.
Yeah.
It's the right or left button that advances it.
Do you want to sit back?
Should be the side.
Betsy, yes.
Yeah. Can you just advance it maybe? Oh, you got it? Oh, okay.
So you have to press the little arrow above this thing, this will take it backwards.
Easy for you to say.
Maybe, yes, I, but I think this will advance it again. I'm just pressing just right in that round disk area.
See how it goes.
We've got to try and, I'm always available to lay down or speed it up when we're way ahead.
Okay. Okay, so to start out with a little context, the Conservation Commission has a twofold mission. We have regulatory charge to implement the goals of the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act and the Falmouth Wetlands Bylaw and Regulations. And we also have a stewardship responsibility under the Massachusetts Conservation Commission Act of 1957, which established municipal COMCOMs to manage municipal conservation lands. The goals of the Wetlands Protection Act and our local bylaw are to protect public and private water supplies, groundwater quality, fisheries, shellfish, and wildlife habitat, to prevent and manage pollution, flooding, storm damage, and erosion and sediment runoff, and to preserve agriculture, aesthetics, recreation, and aquaculture. Our stewardship responsibility is to protect and sustain the town's natural ecosystems for current and future generations to use and enjoy. The commission includes seven regular members and three alternates. We have two officers, a chair and a vice chair, currently Jamie Matthews. And two of our members are representatives to other town committees as well, to the Community Preservation Committee, that's Steve Patton currently, and the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee, that's Jamie Matthews. We also have a staff of three full-time and a half-time employee, administrator, agent, and clerk. And the half-time employee is a technician shared between Conservation and Marine and Environmental Services. For the past six months, we have been shorthanded on the staff since we, since our conservation technician Alexandra Zoll left to take a similar position with the 300 Committee. And since then, her, the technician position has been filled by Mark Kaspersek, the department's longtime and very capable agent. And so we are looking to hire a new full-time agent, and we expect to be able to do that in the next week or two. I'm told that we have had an outstanding pool of applicants, and we're down to three candidates and hopefully making a decision next week. Also, with the savings that we've had from being shorthanded for half a year, we are looking to hire some, contract out for a temporary person, half-time, for about six months, who will be able to help our overworked administrative clerk with scanning a bunch of our records, which are due to be sent off-site to the archives. So that will be, enable us to keep them handy. And finally, we have regular support from two other important sources. We have a recording secretary, Susan Cronin, who also supports the Coastal Resiliency Action Committee along with our administrator, Jen McKay. And we have had a succession of AmeriCorps interns. We currently have our fifth intern placement from AmeriCorps Cape Cod. And so we are developing a good, solid, reliable source of help with that organization. In 2017, the commission had a very full schedule of meetings and hearings. In addition to 38 regular public hearings, which are televised on Wednesday nights, we had two specially scheduled meetings to vote orders of conditions. This happens from time to time when we don't have the necessary quorum at our regular meeting. We also held two special public hearings, presentations on the Coonamessett River Restoration Project and the Companion Heritage Trail Project. And we had two joint meetings with the Board of Selectmen and other boards and committees. So for the seven members and alternates who served on the commission throughout all of 2017, the attendance ranged from 55 percent to 92 percent, and the average attendance rate was 83 percent. I was told that you like to get information on that. In terms of our regulatory and administrative actions, it was very similar to recent previous years. Our main two categories of permitting are the notice of intent for major projects that usually takes up the bulk of the time at our regular hearings. We reviewed 92 of those, along with 124 requests for determination of applicability. And those are simpler permit requests that are mostly administratively reviewed, and then we take recommendations, staff recommendations, as to whether or not the application requires, you know, going to the next level and a more complete application before the board. And then a variety of other actions that you can see here. We issued 81 certificates of compliance. Those are issued when a project that we have permitted has completed all the requirements of the project and is looking for an occupancy permit or whatever. And these certificates are recorded in the Registry of Deeds, stay with the land. And so I won't go through all the others, but I'd like to take this opportunity to point out that for our 92 NOIs this year, we had only three denials. So that's an approval rate of nearly 97 percent. I think that's probably news to a lot of people. Not living up to your reputation. That's right. That's part of it we don't particularly want to live up to.
Could you?
Turning to the. Hold on just one second. Sure.
Could you briefly talk about the five enforcement orders? Exactly what kind of things fall under enforcement order?
Mainly, it's things like tree cutting or some kind of action within our jurisdiction that was never permitted. And it's also fairly typical for us to find out about that from a neighbor who calls the Conservation Department. So usually, the correction involves having the person come in and present a plan for restoration of the damage.
But usually, it's things that people didn't come to you and needed to.
Correct. That's the typical case. Sometimes people with permits do things that they're, you know, we haven't given permission for, they go beyond the bounds, and it's kind of technically an enforcement, but we sort of work it out under the order of conditions normally.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so turning to the stewardship side of the mission, these figures I have up there are from, I believe, fiscal year '16, so they might be low by two or three in each case. But anyway, we have oversight and management responsibility for approximately 232 open space parcels in town, and we hold approximately 30 conservation restrictions on other parcels, such as parcels owned by the 300 Committee. Some of the highlights in our, in this area of our activity this year that I'll just touch on briefly include Peterson Farm and these others listed here. As I'm sure you're aware, we lost our long-term tenant farmer, well, grazer at Peterson Farm in September 2016, veterinarian Sue Shone. She has moved to Western Massachusetts with her flock of sheep, and she, after, she had spent many years grazing her sheep on the farm for free in exchange for, you know, her efforts maintaining the farm buildings and mowing and keeping the edges of the pastures and the walking trails in good shape. Since she left, it's been a challenge keeping the invasive plants and things like that in check, and we're thankful, as we so often are, to the 300 Committee for organizing volunteer days and assisting a lot with that effort. They've also been working on a farm management plan to be implemented in the future. And as of tonight, I'm really pleased to be able to say that an RFP has been issued, I think just last week, for a new sheep grazer, and we have at least one very interested bidder that we hope to be receiving something from soon. So hopefully, that situation will get back in good shape soon. Another highlight of the year was the purchase by the 300 Committee and with the Conservation Commission holding the conservation restriction of what we're calling the shallow pond woodlands conservation area. This is, this is the middle section that you see on the map there called the Didario Parcels. They were, for years, trying to use the place for mining gravel, and they weren't, couldn't get permitted for that. There was some litigation. This has been on the 300 Committee's wish list for at least 20 years. So finally, in March, they purchased this parcel, 70 acres, and they paid $1.4 million, and it connects to existing parcels, open space parcels, Bri Vogel and Walbender Conservation Areas. This Didario parcel was the largest remaining undisturbed parcel in Falmouth and, in fact, on all of Cape Cod. And so now, with that purchase, we have three contiguous areas for a total of 183 acres. It's a valuable piece of property from the standpoint of conservation. It's a Zone 2 protected area for the protection of public water supply, and it lies in the northern reaches of the Great Pond watershed, which is, so it's very beneficial to be able to preserve this large area, keep it undeveloped, and thereby prevent further nitrogen loading and degradation of the water quality in Great Pond. The area also includes a very impressive pine forest landscape that is quite unusual in Falmouth. It includes many pines that are 100 years old or more and as much as 60 to 80 feet high. And the property also encompasses a great diversity of wetland plants, as well as a vernal pool and habitat for the threatened eastern box turtle. Okay, by now, I think probably just about everyone in town is aware of the Coonamessett River Restoration Project and Heritage Gateway Trail, which has been so ably advanced and managed by our commissioner, Betsy Gladfelter, who's here tonight. Key restoration activities for this project include removing two dams and replacing them with pedestrian bridges, replacing deteriorating pipe culverts under John Parker Road with a fish-friendly concrete culvert, which serves under a road bridge, restoring 58 acres of cranberry bog to natural wetland, and restoring 4,600 linear feet of in-stream fish habitat. of in-stream fish habitat, which will include removing sand and reconfiguring the river to be more sinuous with connections to cold water springs. Here, we can see the areas where work will be occurring on this project in each of two phases. Phase one includes the removal of lower dam and restoration of lower bog. And that has cost about $820,000 of grant funds plus in-kind match. Phase two is now at the point where the design is 75% complete and the plans are going through permitting. This has cost $275,000 of grant funds. And the important benefits we're expecting from the river restoration include-
You popped one ahead, by the way.
Yeah. Oh, I'm going in the, yeah, I'm going, it doesn't seem to cooperate in terms of what, there we go. I'm sorry. The benefits we, we are aiming for are fish, creating fish access to 2.2 miles of free-flowing river, enhanced coastal resiliency in the form of enhanced flood storage and nutrient reduction, and more rapid recovery after natural disturbances, improved access for recreation, and new opportunities for the public to learn about the river's environmental, industrial, and cultural history. And those opportunities are primarily going to be provided along the, I wasn't even touching it that time, along the Coonamessett Gateway Heritage Trail, which is planned to be about three and a half miles in length and will feature multiple trails with loops and way stations with informational kiosks, which will cover a variety of topics and inform the public about the history of human uses of the river, including foraging, industrial mills, agriculture, commercial fishing, and tourism, the geology, hydrology, and ecology of the river, and the benefits of watershed protection and restoration. And we also, of course, have the developing plans moving quickly for the purchase of Tony Andrews Farm and adjoining ocean spa, open space owned by the Andrews family. The plan calls for the town to purchase the farm, which is 36.7 acres, for a price of $2 million, and for the 300 committee to hold the conservation restriction. The goals for the farm purchase are to protect the farm from development and ensure its continuation as a working farm for the benefit of the town. And the funding for this will come from a variety of places, the Community Preservation Committee, free cash authorized at a town meeting, the 300 committee, and anticipated reimbursement from the state land grant program. Another integral part of the plan is that the 300 committee will purchase the adjoining nine-point acres of Andrews family land overlooking Pond 14 on Ronnie Road. And the Conservation Commission will hold the conservation restriction on behalf of the town for this purchase. The goals of this open space purchase are to preserve important open space in the Coonamessett River Corridor for conservation, passive recreation, and protection of water quality and habitat. Turning to a different kind of special project in 2017, our AmeriCorps intern, Matthew O'Keefe, compiled an inventory of the town's Ways to Water. It's a four-volume inventory. This is volume one of four here. And it covers all of the known public ask, access points, which number about 110, to Falmouth's inland and coastal waters. So for each of these access points, the inventory includes the following information, the water body, the name of the water body and the type of water body, the access location, including its street address, parcel IDs, acreage, ownership, the type of access and recreational opportunities it provides. And in, in this regard, the, the, the individual entries are organized according to public beaches, boat ramps, and public access points for kayaks, canoes, and dinghies, plus another 55 places to access ponds, rivers, and harbors by car, on foot, or by some other means. And the inventory also has standardized information about the presence or absence of parking, signage, amenities, and the noteworthy natural features and present conditions of the, the parcel and the water body, things like erosion, pollution, dumping, et cetera. And it also includes photos and the latest date on which the site was visited for purposes of maintaining the inventory. So the benefits that, from this inventory will be to provide enhanced information about access opportunities to the public. And we believe it will also be very helpful as a resource to support coastal resiliency assessment and planning activities. Eventually, we would like to, this is a notebook, then, you know, we'd like to get the information on our website. And a bigger, you know, more ambitious effort with this would be to, will be, to hopefully be able to incorporate some GIS images so that people will be easily able to, to see what's where.
Incredible.
And finally, just to give you an idea of a few things we're thinking about for next year, other than our usual permitting activities, we are planning to hold some public sessions to discuss a few regulatory issues that we find have been arising with increasing frequency and may warrant more regulatory clarity, either from us or from perhaps the Board of Health or some other body. So we have so far, have one session, just maybe a half-hour discussion on the possible use of denitrifying subject systems, which are not covered in our regulations, but from time to time, come up as something that we think is appropriate for a given project in a given location where they are, will be installing a new subject system. So I think it was in November when we had this discussion. And in addition to us, members of the Board of Health and the Water Quality Management Committee attended that. And we just, you know, barely got underway, but we will be continuing that. And another similar, but less, I would say, less complicated topic is the use of what they call breakaway panels and velocity zones. These are typically used on buildings in a velocity zone that are raised to meet the new FEMA standards. You know, they're, you know, elevated on, on piles of some kind. And the breakaway panels, they, they pivot on hinges when, when you've got some storm surge coming through. And they're, you know, meant to be, make the place more aesthetically pleasing and that kind of thing. But there are also problems that, that we have encountered, which is that once you put these breakaway panels in, people start using that space for storage. It's supposed to be left open. And when you've got things stored behind these breakaway panels, they don't actually move, so they don't perform the function they're supposed to perform. And we, we've had a, more and more of these applications to redevelop properties. Usually, it's a raise and rebuild to meet the new FEMA standards. And so this has been coming up a lot, and we get into long discussions with the engineers about how to satisfy everyone on this front. And then we are also planning to take a look at some of our informational materials and update them and try to get them out there in the public and for applicants. And these have to do with, the ones we've identified so far, some guidelines for mitigation planting. We have these, but we, we think they need revision because I think too many people take them as gospel or actually regulatory. And we sometimes end up with mitigation planting designs that are not optimal for the site conditions, or even for what the applicant would prefer to have. So we would like to make it a little more clear that there's, you know, there are more considerations than just how many plants and how far apart they should be put. And hopefully, that will encourage people to get more involved in their design for planting. And finally, a flyer about wetland, wetland values and Falmouth Wetland Bylaw and Regulations. And we see this as not, certainly for the general public, but in particular, something that could be very useful for new, people new to town and realtors. We'd like to encourage realtors to, you know, get up to speed if they're not up to speed and share this information with their prospective home buyers. I think that would save heartache in a number of cases.
Great.
So that's about it. Be happy to answer some questions if you have any.
Really terrific presentation. You know, I think that as I look at, you know, some of these last issues here, some of the joint meetings that we've been having, certainly if your board feels like it would be helpful to raise that in a, one of the Board of Selectmen meetings where we have so many boards together, we'd be happy to do that at some, you know, with housing developments and, and other concerns, certainly issues that are, a lot of people are going to face. And that's a good opportunity to get further public information. Really great, you know, in terms of transparency, education, great, great presentation.
Thank you.
Sam?
Yeah, I just, I'm your liaison to the-
Yes, you are.
... Conservation Commission and get to at least three quarters of the meetings anyway. But I just want to say that this is a group of individuals, see Betsy back there, who really put a lot of time and effort in on behalf. So obviously, their hearts are dedicated to conservation, but they do a huge number of site visits and they spend a lot of time reviewing designs, drawings, the narratives that go along with drawings, to try to make sure that the project fits within the regulations of both the state and Falmouth. So I, my hats are off to them for the amount of time that they spend, because it's pretty obvious, if you sit in on their meetings, that, you know, they're, they're not just sitting up there during the Conservation Commission hearings. They're hard at work throughout the week reviewing all these projects. So a special thanks to all of you for the work that you do. And especially somebody like Betsy, who's out there advocating for things like the Coonamessett Greenway and Heritage Trail, and seeking out grant opportunities and submitting proposals in order to be able to win those. So this is a, a committee, along with the 300 committee, to be commended for all the work that they actually invest in this town.
Thank you very much. That's, that's very nice.
You did mention about the land grant as the hopeful that we're going to get that. And actually, I think we did receive word last week that we have received that from the state.
Great.
And that's for Tony Andrews purchase.
I'm always the last to know.
With so many properties under your control, how do you keep track of them all? How do you keep track of what condition they're in?
It's really difficult. And we couldn't possibly manage it without the 300 committee and, and all their volunteers. But, you know, I, we do the best we can. And in fact, the next AmeriCorps volunteer project is going to be to visit as many of the conservation lands as possible that haven't yet been catalogued in terms of all their resources. And so to, you know, to do a cataloguing of that as a start for making up the management plan for each parcel. And we sometimes, you know, we get, some of our applications are, some of our favorite applications are from places like the Boy Scouts, who, you know, want to do one of their projects, to, you know, do trail, create new trails or do trail maintenance on some of these lands. So we do the best we can, is about all I can tell you, with a lot of very generous volunteer help.
Sam?
Yeah, I just want to say in kind of a response to Doug's question, that I think this really comes down to the, kind of the category of community policing. I know that Mary mentioned that sometimes these enforcement orders comes as a result of neighbors saying something about violations of the regulations, and, and that's how it gets started. But I think people can be more proactive in informing their neighbors, say, look, you know, there are restrictions on what you can do with your property. You know, you don't have complete control, even if you own it. There's a larger community responsibility for preserving these natural resources. And so I think it's important that the community really help the Conservation Commission and our conservation agents in making sure that in fact, we're really, you know, advocating for preserving these natural resources. And it's that method. And I think as much being proactive and informing people, hey, look, you know, you shouldn't be doing what you're about to do, you know, or at least educating them upfront, you know, you have a beautiful piece of property. I know you want to open up your, your vista, but think about the natural resource and trying to preserve that, because that's part of the community's interest in this property. It's not, you don't get the right to do anything you want with it.
Correct.
You have to be socially responsible, and I think that's the important.
Yes, and we, I mean, we are trying to think of ways to do better outreach, and hopefully we will be able to get some of this stuff on, up on the website gradually. We've also thought, like the flyer that I mentioned here at the end, that we were, we're hoping to distribute to realtors. This would be a revision of something that's been kind of, you know, it's, it's a little bit out of date, but it's certainly out of circulation. And, and so hopefully, we can get that done fairly quickly. And we have even knocked around ideas of, you know, just like putting a little one-line sentence with the website address on maybe the tax bills or the water bills or something like that, encourage people to check it out.
Just one more thing. I think I had three black locusts, excuse me, black oaks that got infested with the gall wasp and had to come down. And I knew I was within the conservation, 100 feet of a conservation. And so I reached out to the conservation agent. I think people should realize that they're there to advise you on how the best way to move forward in a responsible manner. So it turned out to be an RDA, you know, and he came to my property and he looked at the trees and he said, oh yeah, they definitely have to come down. And so we went through the process, pretty simple. But just reaching out and asking those questions when you do live next to a conservation resource, you're going to get the constructive support that you'd like.
Yeah. And the staff, Jen, the administrator, and while it's been Mark and now it will be somebody new, the agent, they spend a tremendous amount of time just talking to people, going to their sites, and trying to be as helpful with, to them as they can. That's how most of their time is spent, so.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think it's appropriate time for Mr. Suso to make an announcement about Tony Andrews Farm, since we just let that, while the water quality folks are setting up. Mr. Suso?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. And on the, on the heels of Conservation Commission Chair, Mary Schumacher's very thorough report, as you noted, it's timely to announce, because the Conservation Commission will be holding the conservation restriction on Andrews Farm, to announce a decision by the Board of Selectmen that the short-term license for continued agricultural production on the Andrews Farm is being awarded to Jeff Andrews to continue his agricultural work out there at this point through November of next year. So that process is unfolding and has been affirmed by the Board of Selectmen.
And congratulations to Jeff. We appreciate your continued stewardship, and we know the property is in great hands. So next, we have the report for the Water Quality Management Committee. I see the committee here. Hello, Eric? Do you need the mic?
I do.
Oh, we have able assistants right there, Virginia. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
I advise all of you not to clean your own gutters.
Ouch.
And I'm much more attuned to the concerns of the Commissioner of Disabilities than I was before this.
I would imagine. Well, thank you for coming despite another challenge.
Well, thank you. Before we start with the presentation, I, most of our committee is here, and I'd like to introduce them, not necessarily to you, because you, you appointed them, but, but to the general public, but because it is a marvelously qualified group you've, you've given this here. Virginia, of course, has been a selectman for 21 years and involved in every good thing this town has done in that time. But we have John Waterbury, who was the associate scientist- But we have John Waterbury, who was the Associate Scientist Emeritus at the Department of Biology at HUe and serves on the Town Board of Health. We have Matt Charette, who we hardly ever see anymore because he is the Director of the Woods Hole Seagrant, as well as a Senior Scientist in the Department of Marine Chemistry and Geochemistry at HUe. We've got Tom Duncan, Professor Emeritus of Environmental Science at Nichols College, and Steve Layden, a retired engineer with the National Institute of Health. And of course, Ron Zweig, who's not with us tonight, but who is a specialist in agriculture and fish farming with the World Bank, the United Nations, the International Fund for Agriculture Development, several US government agencies and NGOs. It's a really talented group and it does the town of Falmouth very well to have them working on these issues.
Very grateful.
And of course, Sia Karplus, who is the one who carries out all the brilliant ideas we come up with.
She makes them brilliant. She gets the ideas. The brilliance is in it happening, right?
That's right. It does not happen by accident. Anyway, let's start with this. Falmouth has 15 impaired estuaries. Impaired means they've got more nitrogen than is healthy for them. Our 15 estuaries comprise 40% of all the impaired estuaries on Cape Cod. I mean, we, Cape Cod has a problem. We have the biggest piece of that problem by far in the town of Falmouth. You can see it starts up at McGansett Harbor, Rans Harbor, Fiddler's Cove, Wild Harbor, West Falmouth Harbor, down to Quissett, down to Oyster Pond, Salt Pond, Falmouth Inner Harbor, Little Pond, Great Pond, Green Pond, Boons Pond, Wacoit Bay and Eel Pond. And those lines you see are the zones of contribution to each of those water bodies. 75% of the homes in Falmouth are in a zone of contribution to an impaired water body. So, here is the slide that kind of paints, paints the picture, estuary by estuary of just where, how much nitrogen has to be removed to get those estuaries to the level where they can be restored to health. And as you can see, the west coast estuaries are actually in fairly decent shape compared to, you look at the bottom half here, compared to the south coast estuaries. From Falmouth Harbor to Wacoit Bay is where the largest nitrogen impact has been and we've all seen it with the water quality in those estuaries deteriorating as much as it has. So this committee was established in 2011 with a mandate to explore every alternative to sewer-ing and to recommend sewer-ing only where it was absolutely necessary and to make it as affordable as possible to the residents and the businesses and the taxpayers of Falmouth. These are the five areas, six areas that we have actually spent most of our time and energy and the town's funds on. And we're going to run through them one by one, not necessarily for you because you're well aware of a lot of this, but I think the general public may not be. So fertilizer control. As we all know, fertilizer is nitrogen. Putting it on the ground and watching it go into the estuaries is the surest way to get nitrogen into the estuaries. This town passed the toughest fertilizer control bylaw in Massachusetts. It basically says, within 100 feet of any saltwater estuary, you cannot put any fertilizer on your lawn. And people say, "Well, how do you enforce that?" Every year, this town sends out a letter to every property owner who has property within 100 feet of estuary saying, "There's a bylaw that you cannot do this. And here's the penalty and here's who's watching." And Sam has brought up a very good point, which is the best people to watch these things are the neighbors. Anybody who lives near a water body that's impaired should know, the first thing you do is stop putting fertilizer on it. And if you see your neighbor doing it, they should let us know about that. But we have, as I say, the toughest bylaw and the most regular enforcement of any town on Cape Cod. Nitrogen removing IA systems, that means Innovative Alternative Systems. Right now, the current ones that are approved by the state remove perhaps 50% of the nitrogen. That clearly is not going to be enough to get where we want to go in these estuaries. You could make everybody in the watershed put one in and you still wouldn't get there in some of these estuaries. So Falmouth has been leading the charge as far as testing in the ground, in real people's homes, advanced systems, which can remove up to 75% of the nitrogen. As we speak, this town, this committee and the Coalition for Buzzards Bay have already installed 20. We've got 10 more systems going into the ground in the West Falmouth area. We have several different varieties going into the ground. One of them is the so-called layer cake, which is George Hoyfelder's, up at the test center, George Hoyfelder basically developed this way of dealing with nitrogen. There's an aluminumite system that's gone in several places, a hoot system and a blackwater storage tank, which is basically just a holding tank. But we're trying them out in each of these neighborhoods in West Falmouth. The individuals involved volunteered their property. They got a $10,000 incentive grant to actually help with the cost, but the cost is always considerably more than $10,000. So they're putting their own money on the line. Each of the neighbors there chose which system they wanted to try out. So we have a variety of them going in. And by the end of this experiment, which will be next year, we're going to know what works, not only what works as far as removing the nitrogen, but what works as far as consumer acceptability. You know, how much work does the homeowner have to do by way of inspections and testing and all that to make it acceptable? And as well as cost, you know, how much do these things cost? And we'll know more than anybody has ever known about IAs in Massachusetts when we're done here. Shellfish propagation is another area where we're, where we're kind of leading the parade here. The pictures here is the first one on the left is the area in Falmouth Harbor where we start with little seeds the size of sand grains. And you put them in those and they grow to a certain size. Then they move to the next place, which is Little Pond, and that's the picture down below here, where they go into bags and they get to grow larger. After they've grown to a certain size, they then move to West Falmouth, to Boons Pond and Green Pond. 1 million oysters, starting with these little grains of sand, will remove 140 kilograms of nitrogen each growing season. So the scenario that we're working on and making happen here is tied very closely with this Falmouth Agriculture Plan that the town has been pursuing. The basic premise of that plan is, let's find the areas in each estuary where the wild harvest can continue and should continue. Let's find the areas where agriculture could work. Let's identify those areas and put them out to agriculture people who will actually grow the shellfish in those areas. And then we will take the credit for all of that nitrogen reduction that all of that shellfish activity produces. And in several of these estuaries, it's going to be a key element of being able to get the nitrogen down to the level it needs to go to without sewer-ing. Permeably reactive barriers is an idea that it's sort of the Holy Grail. We keep reaching for it, but we haven't quite got there. It's, the idea is simple enough. If there's nitrogen coming to the estuary in the groundwater and you put a barrier, it doesn't have to, it could be wood chips, it could be some kind of, what do we use?
It's actually a, any mulch, it's an oil, which provides carbon.
Whatever, whatever you want to put in the ground that would intercept the nitrogen and hit it with the carbon would presumably make it not reach the estuary. As we're finding, it's a very complicated thing and groundwater does its own thing and it doesn't necessarily do what you think it's going to do. But we have, there has been one installed in Orleans and we have proposed one in the Great Pond Watershed right up near Route 28. We've put a grant application in for that and we're hoping to get it funded. And if it is funded, we will actually have one in the ground that, in our town, and we'll be able to draw some conclusions as to just exactly whether it's going to be a workable option or not. But it's still on the, on the list of possibilities right now. Inlet widening, of course, is a pretty obvious way. If you want to get some flushing going on, you would widen an inlet. And if you have flushing going on, the nitrogen that has been collecting in the estuary will more than likely come out. The Mass Estuaries Project identified Boons Pond as the most likely prospect for that producing the kind of results we want. So a couple of years ago, the Town, the Selectmen and the Town Meeting and the Town Voters approved the Boons Pond Inlet Widening Project. The estuary right now has a width of 50 feet and it's going to go to 90. Permeating is now underway. The cost was voted by the voters, $5.5 million. And most of that frankly was the cost of a new bridge. The actual inlet opening is not that expensive, but the bridge, of course, you have to have a new bridge if you're going to make it twice as wide. If it works and if it's approved, the cost to remove the same amount of nitrogen from Boons Pond by sewer-ing would be $45 million. So it clearly is in everybody's best interest, the town's best interest and the folks in the Boons Pond area. It's in their best interest that this proceed and that it be successful.
Can I just ask a question? Just on that point, I've heard from, and I know this is a question that we've discussed before, but just for folks who are watching, I've had a lot of individuals approach me with concern about this project in terms of what would it mean for, you know, the, during a storm, for the water that's able to come through that, you know, folks who live right, right there thinking that there's going to be so more of a flooding event essentially because it's a wider area. And I know, you know, folks have legitimate concerns about what that, so just, I'm sure this is.
We're giving this to Virginia.
That question was obviously raised very early on in this project and so a specific study was done of modeling using up-to-date bathymetry and, and modeling for the entire area, all the way, the whole range of the beach. And it, the answer is, there is no flooding. That the inlet itself is very efficient at letting water in and letting water out, number one. And then second, that actually because the land is so low, the land floods before you even get to, to the height of the bridge. So you're, it's so the storm surge will go over the beaches and actually we have to continually rebuild the beaches, that's why. The storm surges go over the land on both the west side and the east side. And so that before the water even rises to the level of the bridge. So, the analysis was that this did not in any way damage properties that were farther inland than would occur normally with any kind of storm.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and this we consider a demonstration, demonstration project as well. The Little Pond Sewer Service Area. As we're going to, with this, which has now been completed, we're going to find out if sewer-ing a watershed does in fact restore the quality of the pond, which is of course the whole object of the whole effort. As you all recall, this was, this was a big project. 1,486 residences and businesses were connected to the sewer. The calculation is that 88% of the nitrogen that Little Pond needs to have removed will be removed by the sewer-ing. The cost to the homeowner turned out to be remarkably low. $13,000 betterment at 0% financing, paid over 30 years, costs the homeowner $435 a year. I will say without a question in my mind, that's the lowest betterment in Massachusetts ever. And the project, thanks to Ray Jack and a lot of good people who pushed this thing forward, came in on time and under budget. And with, and I might just add, there's sort of a little building boom going on in Mary Vista now as, as people who previously couldn't expand their houses because they didn't, they didn't have the ground area unencumbered or they didn't, couldn't have any more bedrooms, they're doing it now. And it's to the benefit of the town and to them that this could happen. Here are some of the groups that Falmouth has partnered with, with the Water Quality Committee. I'm not going to run through all of them, but everyone from the EPA to the MBL have been partners with us, either financial partners or on-the-ground partners. The Town of Mashpee in particular, we've, we've been able to work jointly on projects of mutual concern with Wacoit Bay and it's been a big benefit for both parties. We have also been assiduously chasing grant money on the town's behalf and received a fair amount of it. That West Falmouth Harbor project, we got $250,000 from the EPA for that one in conjunction with the Coalition for Buzzards Bay. The Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative has been an extremely valuable partner for us and we are very sorry to see that the county's willingness to fund grants through that entity has gone away. Falmouth was a very frequent requestor and frequent recipient of grants from the entity and it has done a lot of us a lot of good. The Mashpee Project, I've mentioned the Aquashoot at Munichus Study. Not only did the Town of Mashpee and the Town of Falmouth help fund that one, but the Water Protection Collaborative did and the Citizens for the Protection of Wacoit Bay and Mashpee Environmental Coalition, all contributed money to that study, which was a top priority of the Town of Mashpee. So, so far we have brought in two-thirds of a million dollars in grant money to the Town of Falmouth to pursue these, these goals. So a brief history lesson here. All of this sort of started back in 2009 when, when the town's consultants came in and proposed a sewer plan for the town that basically said, sewer everything south of Route 28 from Falmouth Harbor all the way to Wacoit and then you won't be done because you have to sewer more up in the north of 28. And the total price that they recommended at that time was $600 million. And that made everybody's neck snap. We all looked at ourselves and said, "This will not be. You know, we're not doing that." So for the next couple of years, a review committee on which Doug Brown was a very valuable member, looked at the issues that were involved and started to come up with how the town should address it in a way that did not involve $600 million. What the town came up with was the Water Quality Management Committee, which is here before you. A comprehensive wastewater management plan for those estuaries in the south was approved by DEP in 2014. Included in that plan was Little Pond Sewer Project, which the people of the town voted for in 2014. Also included was the Boons Pond Inlet Project, which the people voted for. And so, so from 2009 to 2017, we have come a long way away from the idea that sewer-ing everything for $600 million was something this town was going to engage in. Here's where we are now. And this is a snapshot and it's not necessarily the last word, but here's where we are now on this committee as far as what we would be recommending to you and to the town as far as what, what we can do with sewer-ing and what we can do without sewer-ing. Without sewer-ing, we feel comfortable in saying we can, we can address McGansett Harbor, we can address Fiddler's Cove, we can address Rans Canal. Wild Harbor is sort of interesting in that we did some sewer-ing there in the past and we're now seeing the fruits of that in that the monitoring in that water body is starting to suggest that the nitrogen's coming down. So, so while we may have done the sewer-ing, we may not have to do any more in Wild Harbor. West Falmouth Harbor, we're very comfortable, will not need any sewer-ing. Quissett Harbor as well. Oyster Pond can be done without sewer-ing, though it's possible, and Steve will I'm sure have something to say about this if you ask him, that sewer-ing there because of its propensity to, to being hooked up to the existing system, it might turn out to be less expensive for that neighborhood, for that particular neighborhood to go for the sewer-ing. But they don't have to, is the point, they have a choice. Salt Pond, we had our meeting last week and decided Salt Pond, if you sewed everything in that watershed, you still wouldn't clean up Salt Pond because of the geology and the makeup. makeup of it. Falmouth Harbor, surprisingly enough, it doesn't need that much cleanup and it can be done. And Boons Pond, if the inlet opening happens, can definitely be done without any sewer-ing. Now, estuaries that will need some sewer-ing. Little Pond, of course, we've already done. Great Pond is just too loaded with nitrogen to conceive of doing it without sewer-ing. And that's because not only do you have the nitrogen that's contributed by all the hundreds or thousands of houses that are on the peninsulas there, but it collects from all the way, all the watershed up to the Gunnemesset Pond. All the groundwater from there comes right into Great Pond. So it's a huge quantity of nitrogen. It cannot be done without some sewer-ing. Green Pond, interestingly enough, if you sewed all of Acapescot, you would, half of the nitrogen from Acapescot goes to Green Pond. So if you sewed Acapescot, you might be able to get away without sewer-ing Green Pond, without sewer-ing Davisville. And then you get to the 800-pound gorilla, which is Wacoit Bay and Neil Pond. It's got everything flowing into it, including Mashpee, a piece of sandwich. It's a huge water body that has a huge nitrogen impact. And we haven't gotten far enough to be able to tell who's going to do what because Mashpee has their own plans and their own timetable. The TMDL was very late in actually being put out. So, it's not a today or tomorrow thing, but it's obviously high on our list because that's another one where some sewer-ing is going to have to happen to get the nitrogen down in that area. This is kind of an interesting picture that most people haven't seen, but once they see it, they recognize it. Those are our peninsulas there, and the two that you can see that obviously have a lot of development and a lot of dense development are Acapescot and Seacoast Shores. Now, if you look at the colors in this map, the red color are lots that are less than 7,800 square feet. These are very small lots and there's a lot of red coloring on this map. The blue are lots between 7,800 and 10,000 square feet. These are still very small lots in the scheme of things. And there's a lot of blue. Even the yellow, which is between 10,000 and 15,000 square feet, those are still relatively small lots in the town. And you can see those two peninsulas are basically loaded with small lots and mostly developed lots, which tells you two things. It tells you that even if you had IAs that were efficient, you probably couldn't do them because you don't have enough land on people's lots to install them. But the other thing it tells you is if you put a sewer in there, it's quite likely to be a relatively low-cost thing because there's so many people who would be paying into the betterment. So, it's interesting and it informs all of our discussion and I'm sure it will inform yours.
Sure, well, on that aspect, are we also going to have to build another plant?
We don't think so, but certainly not if you did Acapescot. The plant can clearly handle that. By the time you get to Seacoast, you know, at this point, we don't know the volume, we don't have enough numbers to make that judgment. Obviously, the preference would be not to, but we don't have the numbers available yet to make an informed recommendation at that level.
No, I was just going to say, but it would be, I guess, would be somewhat closer to tie into some of our sewer-ing that we have in place from Acapescot...
Absolutely.
...than obviously from Seacoast. I mean, we've got this beautiful new system, you know, a couple streets over, but...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Sam?
Let me ask you a question about getting the permit from DEP to allow discharge from the West Falmouth Sewer Treatment Plant. I mean, that's a limitation that we're up against right now, aren't we not?
Yeah, and the next slide, we're going to discharge, because discharge is, of course, the key issue to any of this. Here's our sort of scenario of what's going to happen as far as what we're going to be able to recommend to you and to the town and to DEP in the next seven years, eight years. We have a deadline of the end of 2019 for an updated comprehensive wastewater management plan for Great Pond, Green Pond, Boons Pond, and Wacoit Bay. We did the one in 2014 that said, "We'll sewer the Little Pond watershed and we'll pursue the alternatives, and we'll come back in five years and tell you what we're going to do next." So, the five years will be up at the end of 2019, and long before that date, this board and this town will have a plan for where we go after that. Oyster Pond, remember back when the original committee was created and the bond issue was issued? Oyster Pond got funded to do its own CWMP, and so we're trying to keep that one on the same track so that it'll be all submitted at the same time. So that'll be 2019 for Oyster Pond. Discharge site, this is the 10,000-pound gorilla, if you will, because basically the discharge that we're doing now into the ground, into West Falmouth Harbor, is unacceptable. There's not going to be any more and there's going to be probably less. The new site that the town acquired just north of the current plant is large enough to take the volume from the Heights and Maravista project, but no more. So, we will need a new discharge, and I say site, but it may not be a site. It may be at the base, it may be a new technology, it may be out in the water. We're looking at everything to find out what's approvable, what would work, and what would be affordable. But we're nowhere near close to having an answer to that, but we will have to have an answer to that by 2021, because any plan that we have, obviously that's going to be the first question, where's the discharge? Great Pond will have a targeted watershed management plan, we hope, by 2022, and that's the one that says, "Here's exactly what you're going to build." And paying for it, we learned one thing the first go-around, which is you do never go to the taxpayers of Falmouth and say, "We want you to spend 30, 40, 50 million dollars and raise your taxes." You wouldn't do that, we're not doing that. And we don't have to do that, because as we all know, the debt drop-off, when old projects have been paid off, gives the town what Peter Borey used to call a window of opportunity to put in new projects and pay for them without raising taxes. The deadline for that is 2025, and well before that...
You're going to be ready.
We'll be ready, you'll be ready, the town will be ready to move forward. And it is not up to, it's up to everybody, the selectmen, the town meeting, the town voters, the state EEA, the DEP, the State Revolving Plan. All these pieces have to fit into the plan and have to support the plan if there's going to be a plan. That's our, that's what we do here.
Just to, you know, to kick off the discussion here, you know, as the Cape Water Quality Committee for, you know, where all of these things get discussed from all of the towns on the Cape, I was the representative for a couple of years, and one of, you know, there were two things that were discussed. One is that Falmouth was the leader in terms of, you know, trying things first, in terms of innovation, George, you know, lots of shellfish discussions, and secondarily, getting all the money. It got to the point where I had to, I was like embarrassed because everyone, "Oh, here's Falmouth again, they have a good project, yes, they're getting the money," and "How does Falmouth keep getting first, you know, first up on getting the money?" And that's because of this committee's incredibly professional work, being really at the, you know, right at the window of opportunity when it's there, being aware of these things. And not only has Falmouth benefited tremendously, as you've aptly pointed out, but it's really been an education for the entire Cape and it's really been stimulating for the rest of the towns to want to work together and that'll, you know, it's been important with Mashpee on Wacoit and it'll continue to be important. So, thank you, one and all, and Sia just, you know, carrying it, you know, through back and forth. It's, you know, every citizen should be very proud of all of its committees, but in this committee in particular, really, you know, saves every citizen in the pocketbook. You're, you know, you have more money in your wallet than you would have if we sewed the whole town if this committee didn't do the work that it is doing now. So I just wanted to state that for the obvious. Doug, did you have a comment or a question?
Just a question, did you actually were able to install one of those layer cakes in the West Falmouth Project?
Yes, we did.
Oh, you did, oh, good.
And we're putting a couple more in as part of a grant.
Needing the microphones.
Although I think these are pretty...
Yeah, we have two others going on, and we had one as part of our West Falmouth Project and then we received, George Twyfaller received a grant to put in 12 and Falmouth put in two of those as well. So we've got three in Falmouth.
That's encouraging.
Sam?
Is anything being done with the stormwater runoff? Because that's another contributor to nitrogen in the estuaries, and it seems like that to me is one that we don't have to invest quite as much, there's not quite as much digging to be done in order to be able to implement some of those solutions.
I'm glad you asked that question. Tom?
Yes, we've started a boots-on-the-ground survey, trying to find every place in town where there's direct discharge into the estuaries. Some data is out of date, some data we're trying to update, and we're trying to get a handle on it, and it's something that can often be fixed pretty economically, but we're, no pun intended, we're starting to get our feet wet with that part of it.
Thanks for that, Sam?
Do you have some sense of how much of a contribution that is to our TMDLs?
Not much. It is, people would think of it, "My God, all this water pouring in," but most of it's rainwater, which doesn't have that much nitrogen, and some of the stuff that comes in with it, well, it's bad for the shellfish because it's got, you know, chemicals and coliform and all that stuff, but it isn't nitrogen. So it, I think, particularly in Great Pond, I think we might, the town's been wonderful about this, by the way, as far as being willing to make an effort and actually install things there, but we may find that while it doesn't reduce the nitrogen by a significant amount, it increases the water quality for the shellfish there, which will help the nitrogen.
Thank you.
Is that fair?
Just one other piece about the economic component of it. You know, I think we sometimes think about the homes on the water as these phenomenal big properties that are owned by, you know, folks who have a ton of money. That's not true for a lot, we have a lot of humble, simple homes along the water, and if you are on a stagnant body of water, you know, that's just never going to increase the value of your home. So there are so many layers to this that are just very practical. The piece about not having to pay for sewer-ing, but also the piece of your property maintaining its value, particularly for individuals where that's their biggest asset. It's not their second home they just come down to, you know, it's their primary residence, it's their nest egg, and certainly improving that quality of water benefits that piece of it as well. So it's, I think it's, you know, something that the town, I think for those reasons the town has really understood that and gotten behind the work that you do.
Doug?
And I also understand that by doing the work, we are, we're ahead of the curve on what the state or the federal government would be telling us to do, and there are going to be other places who are going to be told, "You have to do maybe what Falmouth did and not have a choice." We have choices because of the work your community is doing, saying, "We can do these alternatives because we're not being told we have to do some things." Is that true?
Virginia?
I would comment on that. A key piece to this is the financial plan. And so, looking at 2025 as the next drop-off and planning adequately for that, coordinating all of the projects in town as well as the sewer needs, and stormwater is another capital piece that really hasn't had its share, and we're beginning to develop that information for the Great Pond watershed. So I see the selectmen playing a very key role in these coming years of helping to coordinate the departments, helping to have the financial plan fit in with the needs of the town and the construction schedules. I think that this is something that we can do. Originally, when we, back in 2011, it just looked like a monster of a problem that was going to sink us all. But I think this committee has begun to see ways to move forward, and if you help us coordinate with the departments in the town, I think we can do it.
Great Harbor would be a bigger project, I think, than we just did, am I right?
Just about the same size.
Same size? And so, I imagine lessons learned from the recent project might, you know, might benefit the next project coming up at the next window of opportunity. Great, anyone else, Sam?
Yeah, I just want to say, having grown up on the Chesapeake Bay and seen what happened between 1960 and 1980 when it literally turned into pea soup, it's such a much more complex problem to try to clean up something that's where the contribution is like a third of Pennsylvania. You've got half of Virginia, you've got West Virginia, you've got Maryland contributing. At least the nitrogen is coming from us in Falmouth, with the exception of Wacoit Bay and a little bit of McGansett Harbor, right? But this problem is us, we are generating it, and I think we can say the investment is probably worth it and is tractable. And yes, and it's just so fortunate that we have a group like you that are trying to make this as cost-effective as possible, and I think that's, I think, where we are. But I just want to say, we've got a lot easier problem to clean up than somebody that's living on the Chesapeake Bay. And it's an amazingly productive, was an amazingly productive seafood source, source of seafood on the Chesapeake, and we were too. And I think we need to see ourselves getting back to it because we sure aren't growing a lot of food on land around here, since it's pretty much been taken up by houses. So, thank you for all the hard work you're doing.
And thank you all, really appreciate you coming, staying, great report.
Madam Chair, could I just interject one item? Just to piggyback on Eric Turkington's comment about one of the discharge options could conceivably involve the base. Just as a reminder to the board, you'll recall that we were fortunate, four communities cooperating, me with my three counterpart town managers had received a significant grant from, a regional enterprise grant from the state to pursue working with Joint Base Cape Cod, the possibility of jointly exploring wastewater discharge options with the existing facilities and infrastructure on Joint Base Cape Cod, take advantage of that asset that is already in place. And just wrapping up the first phase of that study, and we are, as the board will also recall, you've authorized the application for step two in that process. No guarantees that we'll receive that money, but again, all four communities of Boon, Sandwich, Mashpee, and Falmouth cooperating in that area, and we hope to continue to have timely information available that can feed in additional options to our Water Quality Management Committee and ultimately the entities operating in all four of those municipalities. So, wanted to include that update as well. We're very pleased to have that support from the Commonwealth, which I think is further indication of incredibly innovative things happening in the upper Cape.
Great coordination and great leadership, Mr. Suso, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We don't have anything else?
I think we're good, thank you very much. Be careful out there.
Don't forget your coat, Sia.
Oh, yeah.
But then you'd remember, it'd be a harsh reminder.
Next, we have approvals for all alcohol restaurant licenses. Mr. Jones, do you want to start off?
Sure. Is there anybody here to speak on any of them?
We have Seacrest and Flynn's, I noticed in the audience.
For all alcohol restaurant, I move Anchor Ale House, Baron Boots, British Beer Company, Celestino's North, Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill, Epic Oyster, Glass Onion, Golden Swan, Grill 500, La Cucina Somar, Silver Lounge, The Cape Club, and the New Cape Cod Country Club.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And hold, just for a second, Mr. Suso, these, would these be copied by the office and picked up tomorrow? Because there are two folks here for, or are they able to pick them up tonight?
It would be preferable they could pick them up tomorrow, the office, to make sure we have everything in order.
Just so you know, okay?
Thank you.
Do you want me to read them?
It's now into this man.
Please, he's losing it. At least, at least the voice.
Call me Victor a license, Anchor Ale House, Baron Boots, British Beer...
And hold just for a second, Mr. Suso, these, would these be copied by the office and picked up tomorrow? Because there are two folks here for, or are they able to pick them up tonight?
It would be preferable they could pick them up tomorrow, the office, to make sure we have everything in order.
Just so you know. Okay?
Thank you.
Do you want me to read them?
You sound, to, this man.
Please, he's losing it. At least, at least the voice.
Call me Victor a license, Anchor Ale House, Baron Boots, British Beer Company, Burger King, Cape Cod Bagel, Celestino's North, Coonamesset Farm, Crepe Cod, Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill, Dana's Kitchen, Dunkin' Donuts 614 Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts 4 Sandwich Road, Dunkin' Donuts 363 East Falmouth Highway, Dunkin' Donuts 634 Holly Park Road, East Falmouth Subway, Epic Oyster, Falmouth Elks Lodge, Falmouth Hospital Cafeteria, Falmouth Inn, Friendly's, Glass Onion, Golden Swan, Green Pond Yacht Club, Grill 500, La Cucina Somari, Mary Ellen's Portuguese Bakery.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There was actually another row, so I'm going to keep going, sorry. McDonald's, Moonicus Cafe, Papaginos, Pie in the Sky, Silver Beach Pizza and Seafood, Silver Lounge, Supreme Pizza and Subs, The Cape Club, and the New Cape Cod Country Club.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In holder license, Falmouth Inn, Holiday Inn, Seacrest Beach Hotel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Entertainment, Anchor Ale House, British Beer Company, Falmouth Inn, Green Pond Yacht Club, Grill 500, La Cucina, Seacrest Beach Hotel, Silver Lounge, The Cape Club.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sunday Entertainment, British Beer Company, Falmouth Inn, La Cucina, Seacrest Beach Hotel, The Cape Club, Automatic Amusements, Falmouth Elks Lodge, Falmouth Inn, Papaginos, and Seacrest Beach Hotel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you for that. Next, we have the minutes for the meetings, public session, July 10, 2017.
I move approval and release.
Second. All those in favor?
There was one thing I noticed that
Doug?
I had recused myself from the vote, but it was noted that Mr. Jones had recused himself from the vote. So that's a correction.
Oh.
On July 10?
Yes.
Yeah, what page, what?
I don't know the page. It's on the Discussion on the East Falmouth Village Association Sign Variants.
Mr. Suso has that noted. Okay. With that, I move approval with that correction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the public session meeting, meeting minutes for October 14, 2017.
See, I have an edit on page six. Actually, I have an edit on page four as well. It looks like it's one, two, three, four. The fifth paragraph down, it just says Steve question mark. And I'm pretty sure that's Steve Rafferty, Water Superintendent.
Mr. Suso, Steve Rafferty. Is the Steve in question? And would that change?
Oh, well, I have some others.
Okay, go ahead.
On page five, at the top, it says unknown speaker. I'm pretty sure that was Peter Johnson's stall. That's the way it sounded like, based on what was being said.
Yeah.
I wasn't there, but just between the minutes, I thought, I bet that was Peter.
Yeah. And I'm quite certain that's who actually made the comment. And then on page six, in the middle of the page, where Steve Rafferty's name is mentioned again, we have not really changed the subject as we go through the minutes. So it's almost impossible for anybody to figure out what facility we're talking about. So I, what I'd like to do is change that and say, Steve Rafferty, whatever reuse the old pumping station building goes to, there's a lot, there's not a lot of parking at that location. So that at least tells.
So it identifies the place?
The place. And then after that.
Was there a sentence missing in that next paragraph?
Is it? And Peter, required for water protection purposes?
Maybe it was a different paragraph. There's one paragraph right here where I got completely lost as what was going on.
Well, I think that's, by adding the old pumping station puts the subject in there so that it makes sense after that.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
That makes sense. You have that, Mr. Suso?
Yes.
Okay.
With that, I'll move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
And what abstention? Next, we have the minutes of the meeting, November 20, 2017.
I move approval and release.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I had one correction on that one, though, that was, I mean, it's not even a correction, we just, I thought it was important to note. I mean, I did vote against the reduction in fees on the ambulance for Chief Small's request. I just want to make a note of that because I feel like.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It did show one against.
Okay. Well, that was me.
Okay.
Did you want your name noted as the
I do, yeah.
dissenting vote? Okay.
Sure.
And I'm sorry, I need to abstain from that vote. That was the night that my daughter was sick. I wasn't here. I didn't realize that. Sorry.
Okay.
But that one?
I don't think it even shows you as being present.
No, it said absent. It's correct. I just.
Oh, I see.
Abstain from the vote just taken.
Yep. Thank you.
I got you.
Okay.
Right. And we, with those changes, we approve.
Right.
Okay. Next, we have the minutes for the meeting, December 4, 2017. Oh, I'm sorry, were you done?
Did we vote?
Yes, we did.
We did.
I was late bringing that up.
Okay, good. Oh, the next one is.
December 4, right?
December 4?
Correct.
And I move approval.
The only thing I noticed that I thought was an important, Mr. Patterson's comment, that the naming of the field for Mr. Gaspar was not just due to his time of service, but for being the type of person that deserves such credit and appreciation, which I think is something that could be in the record.
Can you just say where?
It was at the end of the meeting, when we did the dedication of the Sandwich Road Field for Mr. Gaspar. I'm sorry, I guess I should print the minutes in so I can reference the date.
Got that?
Just adding something about, it's not just.
Record of service.
Yes.
Great.
Greater than just that, than just the sport.
Any other changes?
Not for me.
Move approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have the executive session for July 10, 2017.
I move approval, do not release at this time?
July 10.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
July 10.
On July 10?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have the executive session for November 20, 2017.
I move approval and not release to public access.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. That was the same.
Aye.
Great. Next, we have the executive session minutes for December 4, 2017.
I move approval, but not release to public access.
Can we not release that one?
Not release.
Because this is the short-term lease?
I, December 4th?
December 4.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is November 20th.
No, we already did that one.
Well, we have two of them, we have two different persons.
You're asking if we can release November 20th, right?
Correct.
Right. The second lease.
No, I don't think we can because there's other issues that are.
Part of it.
Part of it. So I don't think.
It's a little early.
So that vote will stand.
Yep.
And now we're on December 4.
Same. I would move approval, do not release.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this session two?
I have one correction that needs to be made. On the very last line on page one, I think the sentence should read, if I back up, anyway, the very last, so would get to run the business and take the, it should be profits.
Proceeds or profits.
Profits for a year. That's.
Yeah, not projects.
Not projects.
What page was that again?
That's on page one, at the very last line, says projects should be profits for a year.
Okay. With that, I move approval not to release.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're on two individual selectmen's reports.
Wait, I think we have one more.
One more.
One more executive session.
On three, sorry.
Executive session three.
December 4.
Yep.
Move approval and not release.
Second.
Excuse me.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's three. Okay, now we're on two individual selectmen's reports. Doug?
So I attended that, the fifth Cape Coastal Conference. That was very interesting, hearing the speakers from New Jersey, talking about all that they've been through since Sandy hit, and urging us to take, take the initiative and don't wait for the storm. I also attended the first meeting of the Nantucket Sound Stakeholders Meeting for Coastal Resiliency. And that was interesting, a little bit of a review of a lot of what we've known already, but looking forward to breaking some new ground with the next session.
Great. Sam?
Yes. I attended the Friends of Knobsko Board Meeting Tuesday of last week. They basically mentioned that the tower is complete except for some punch items, punch, punch list items.
Punch list.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And those are not going to be taken care of until later when the weather's a little bit warmer. So, but, you know, it's virtually 98% complete. And of course, we were able to host the Christmas Pride of the Sea activities there, which we mentioned the last meeting. They have retained a development coordinator to really start looking at how to renovate and turn the Keeper's House into a maritime museum. And that's moving along well. The board has met and talked about strategies. They just, at this last meeting, approved the whole statement of purpose and kind of the, the general thing that you put out there when you're starting to try to raise money for a project like this one. And then I attended the ethics training, which I think many of us did together, the ethics training for public employees. And that includes elected officials and approved committees and boards and commissioners as well. It was an interesting and useful re-education so that we're more sensitive to where we might end up with conflicts of interest and that sort of thing. So that was a useful time. The last thing I attended was a ZBA hearing, which I had had some interesting hearings that I thought I would just mention quickly because they kind of fit into some of the planning that we've been looking at. One is the approval of a, a raising, of putting a second floor on the, the project that's behind Cape.
Crepe.
Crepe? Cape? Crepe?
Crepe Cod.
Crepe Cod, excuse me, Crepe Cod, above the track building and where the new beer company's going to go in and what have you. They're going to put apartments above that. So this is one of those mixed-use developments that we've been looking for. So Mark Legozian is developing this project to put some housing up there. The second one is the expansion of the Falmouth Service Center, which we just mentioned is such an important asset here in town, to include a facility on Sandwich Road, which will allow them to conduct their thrift shop activities there, but also do a lot of the volunteer work of taking in clothing and sorting those things out, and then moving them over to the Gifford Street location where they can be dispensed to people who need those clothes. That too has a mixed-use facility because there are apartments associated with those two buildings. There was some discussion about the available parking and the permitting process had said that they were required to have 46 parcels of parking spaces. But there was a question of expanding the non-pervious, impervious coverage. And so they asked them, all right, back off and turn three of them into gravel type, which is relatively minor, but does facilitate such things as truck turnaround and people turning around. And the third project was a, an affordable housing that basically fell under the new bylaw that was approved. Fortunately, it was a detached building, but they had already put a Title V septic system in, so they met that requirement. But here's an example of an affordable housing unit that's become part of our inventory. So those are the three hearings that I wanted to mention as part of that meeting. So found it very interesting and valuable.
Great. Ms. Boggs?
I don't want to repeat about the ethics training. I thought it was great, I thought it was useful, and obviously very well attended. I will say that I met with Bike Ways, and in addition to hearing about the water stations and giving some feedback about some good locations, we did talk about, and I will be asking for it to be on the agenda in the coming, next coming, few coming meetings, the discussion that we had back when Bike Ways made their presentation about creating sort of a public working group to talk about some of the east-west connector and other biking issues that include people outside of just Bike Ways. So the committee asked me to bring that issue back before this board's attention and to have some discussion about how we think it should best proceed, if it's something that the board wants to sort of take on as a way to raise kind of that level of community involvement, so that folks understand it's something more than simply a Bike Ways issue. We're talking about a community-wide issue. So they, there was a lot of excitement about that, as well as some other work that they're doing on kind of creating some priorities around what they feel are the most important issues going forward. So looking forward to moving that particular task forward in the coming months.
Great. I attended a canal, sort of a bridge traffic DOT presentation in Sandwich, which I've been attending that committee from the beginning, and they are moving ahead. Should check the DOT website if you want to know what traffic might look like going forward. In my view, most of the plans had pretty small impact for potentially large costs. So that's something that's an ongoing work, and there'll be more opportunities for public comment. I do want to thank everyone who came to the conflicts education from the state. There were almost 100 people there by most folks' count. And I really want to thank the employees from the town, department heads, you know, everyone that came really supported that effort. Again, no, it's not something we're going to do every year. We decided this year just to have a comprehensive approach to the new ethics rules that the state had put out. We thought that might be the most direct and efficient way to accomplish that. So again, thank you all for your attendance.
Just on that piece, I was wondering, I know we had talked about it, but just to follow up, if we could, Mr. Suso, get, there was a handout that we ran out of because it was so well-attended, standing room only. And we were just wondering if we could maybe find a way to make that handout available. I know it was really the.
Certainly.
It was the PowerPoint presentation and handout that folks would be able to, I know some, some individuals at the meeting wanted to have.
Yeah, it may be the best option just to place it on the website.
Exactly. And just let, let folks.
Anyone can access that. Happy to do that.
Great idea. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I'm all set.
All set. Mr. Suso?
Question before you.
Oh, hold it.
I thought we were going to do the social media policy.
Denise Wazell. And we, that's why I.
I missed that.
At the, yeah.
It was a fast, it was a fast mention.
But that'll be coming up.
Okay, very good.
It'll be coming up.
I should also have mentioned that that stakeholders meeting for Coastal Resiliency, we, very well attended by town staff, was Ray Jack was there, Jen McKay, Bob Shea, and three of our main people that are working on it. So it's good to see how much interest we have in Coastal Resiliency from the staff.
That's great. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just wanted to confirm our newly-appointed administrative assistant, Deborah Packard, began her work today in our, in our office. And we're happy to welcome Deborah to our staff and look forward to continuing to work with her going forward. And as a reminder, Monday's meeting this evening is the last for the calendar year for the Board of Selectmen. The board's next meeting is set for Tuesday, January 2, and will consist of the formal budget presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. And I've asked that department heads be in attendance, as per usual, to answer any questions that members of the board may have on this presentation on January 2. Town hall and town administrative offices will be closed on Monday, December 25 for the Christmas holiday, and on Monday, January 1 for the New Year's holiday. We are still waiting the final confirmation on a potential Saturday morning, January 27, joint boards meeting. And as soon as we have confirmation of that, we will, we will be pursuing that with the additional boards that the, we would like to invite to that joint gathering. If we are not able to secure that date, then we'll have to get back and talk to the board about some alternatives. Also, the traditional town hall comfort and joy stroll is set for this Wednesday, December 20, from 11:30 to 1:30. And if selectmen's schedules so allow, please plan to stop in and join us. I was also pleased to join the state ethics training course on this past Wednesday evening. And as noted, really a, an overwhelming response, thanks to boards and commissions, chairs of those respectively, Dave Giannetti from the State Ethics Commission for leading that training. And it was very gratifying, and we appreciate the library staff member's support in making that as accommodations possible. I also was able to attend the first, first morning session of that fifth Cape Coastal Conference in Hyannis, and pleased to stay involved with that as well. Unfortunately, my schedule prevented my making the follow-up sessions on it. And also in closure, I want to wish a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, and a Happy New Year to everyone in the community. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Can you just ask one very quick question? Do we send, it's just on my mind because we just did the interviews for Commission on Disabilities, do we send a letter to the individuals who were not selected thanking them? So that, I mean, it just comes to mind that not everyone is in the habit necessarily of watching these meetings. And I wouldn't want them to find out sort of, I think it would be a nice.
Right.
Policy that we just connect with them with a letter that just explains.
Thank you for applying.
Thank you for applying.
The next openings or check, whether there be other committee openings soon.
Just so that people aren't calling.
Great idea.
You know, folks trying to find out what happened. They hear it from us and we, it's just a token of our.